Everybody ready? All right. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call this meeting to order today for our October 12, 2023 board meeting. Welcome everybody here today that's in our courtroom and anybody that's on the virtual world. So thank everyone for coming. Our first item on the agenda today is the invocation by Pastor Corey Kiss.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We look forward to the opportunity to offer the invitation this evening. If you so desire, would you please buy your pants and pray with me? Gracious and loving God, as members of our community gather together for this meeting, we ask for your guidance and wisdom to be present amongst us. I pray that you would be with the members of this board as they work towards the common good of our home, grant them wisdom and understanding and make their decisions as they consider the merits and the pitfalls of each better place before them tonight. We be made in a way that will be most beneficial for all of us. For those of us who call the north and that our home may be nurturing as a land of pleasant living in the way that we as neighbors relate to each other, seeking peace and harmony and laboring to make this place even more beautiful, more pleasant, more welcoming. And in a world that is filled with strife and violence and wars, I pay for peace to reside in our midst, and I pray that you would help us to be good stewards of all that we receive from you. May we always act in accordance with what is best for our community and our fellow citizens. Give us compassion, help us to love beyond ourselves so that we may help those who are less fortunate than we are. Help us also to love you as you have shown your love to us in your son Jesus Christ, in whose name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
All right. Next is pledge allegiance. All stand, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under our individual liberty and justice for all.
Before we approve the agenda, I want to welcome our new member here, Maurice Johnson. He's here filling in in Mr. Jett's place. So thank you for taking the time to do that.
Definitely.
All right. Next is approval of the agenda. Do we have any additions or deletions to it?
Mr. Chairman, I do have one addition. We do need a closed meeting regarding personnel matters.
Okay. All right. Anything else? If not, can I entertain a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of a closed meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All right. I got a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
And that's with the two of the hearings tonight tabled to next month.
That's correct. Two of the public hearings, the one for the solar and the one for the slaughterhouse, have been asked by the applicants to be tabled to next month, which is November 9 at 7:00 PM.
All right. Do you all want to amend your motion?
Yes.
All right. All right. Okay. All right. If there's no other discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you. All right. We have three sets of board minutes. We have a September the 7th, September the 14th, at a 4:30 special meeting, then we had our September the 14th regular board meeting. I hope everybody's had a chance to review them. Are there any additions or deletions to the minutes?
I move that we approve all three.
All right. Got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Got a motion and a second. If no other discussion, everyone in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Next would be our presentations, and we have a proclamation here for National Service Dog Month. Mr. Beatty?
Proclamation for National Service Dog Month. Whereas we believe in the joyful transformative power of the human canine bond and the inclusivity of all citizens, and whereas in the United States, 64 million adults and children have a disability and only 16,000 service dogs from accredited training programs exist nationwide, and the need is growing, and whereas service dogs empower people with disabilities to lead life with greater independence, and whereas National Service Dog Month aims to educate our community about the benefits of service dogs and the laws protecting them, and whereas Northumberland County continues to work toward becoming an inclusive community in which all citizens and their service dogs are embraced, now therefore be it resolved that the Northumberland County Board of Supervisors and recognition of service dogs and adults and children with disabilities in our community do hereby proclaim September 2023 to be National Service Dog Month and encourage all citizens to celebrate, test, train, service dogs, and be respectful of the rights afforded to the adults, children, and veterans who lead more independent lives because of their assistance.
All right. Thank you. All right. What's the pleasure, board?
I move we approve this proclamation.
All right. I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next would be an update from Virginia Department of Transportation. David Beal, good to see you, sir.
Good to be seen.
Yes. Good to be seen above grass.
We've been busy. Just a brief report here. We completed some ditch cleaning on Fruit Lane and Valley Drive. We've replaced pipes on Altown and Dodlet. We cleaned pipes on Fruit Lane, Valley, Brooks, and Gardie's Lane. We've done some shoulder grading on Lively Hope. We cut brush on Cobb Hall and in the Ditchley area. We patched potholes and addressed work orders countywide. We repaired slope on Route 200 and saw the guard rail went up there this week. And we've also repaired a pipe on Judas Sound at the asphalt into the sound there. So hopefully that road drains a little better now. Upcoming, some of this work is already underway. The pipe cleaning on Lively Hope is underway. The brush cutting on Apple Grove is complete. All the pipe replacements, we're still waiting to get them done. This is the time of year that we go through all of our snow equipment with a fine-toothed comb. The dry run in Lotsburg is on October 27th. So if you see trucks driving around, there's snow routes with plows on with sunny skies, they're just practicing, just getting familiar with their routes before they're covered with snow. So the dry run is on the 27th. The payment schedule, most of that work is complete. They do have, I think, one stop bar left to do, and then I'll mark that off the report. The scour repair on 601, that's set to go to ad February 2024. That's it. So if you all have anything for me, I'd be happy to take your comments.
Last month, I asked about the section of road up here at the YMCA about reducing speed limit.
There were...
Yeah. And I talked to Mrs. Tina Hinton, and she agrees with lowering it to 40 miles per hour. She said that would be great.
Forty or 45?
It's already 45.
That's what I was saying. But then you're gonna have, unless you're gonna then drop the speed limit from there toward the turn right in front of St. Stephen's Church, then you're gonna have 40, 45. I'm just wanting you to need a consistent speed zone.
Yeah, then we go 40 all the way.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure. You're on. Almost everything is thanks for getting that guard rail up on 200.
Looks all nice and bright and pretty and shiny.
Safer, too.
Yeah.
Much safer there coming down that road.
Do we have a, do you have a second, Moi?
Yes. Did I skip over that?
Yeah.
I did. We are, we start next on Monday. It'll be the last mo and litter pickup for the whole county.
Both primary and secondary? Okay. Thank you.
You have anything else? Mr. Johnson, you have anything?
No, sir.
Kevin?
Nope.
On Sandy Point Road, 666, a tree fell across it. Somebody cut it. I know it was VDOT or the people down that way don't like to be blocked in, I can tell you. But it's cut just about to the ditch and pavement. So obviously, this is farming season. A combine or some wide truck could hit that thing. It's right about cab heights or higher.
I'll get it.
Yeah.
All right. Anything else? I think that's all, Mr. Beal. We thank you very much.
Oh, I got one thing. Since you were so good on the guard rails, could you look at possibly putting a guard rail just past Academic Lane heading toward Eastfield? Just before you get to where they do the seed stuff, there's a...
Oh, yeah.
There's a right good drop down that might be looked at.
So it's westbound?
Yes, it's westbound. It's just past those houses. You've got Academic Lane here, and it's probably gonna be maybe 100 yards further toward Eastfield. The other side does not need it because it's a lower drop, but the other side is comparable in depth drop to the ones down on 200.
Okay. I'll check it out.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else? All right. Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you. Have a good night.
All right. Next would be an update from Northumberland County Schools. Dr. Wargo?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Supervisors.
Good evening.
I'll be walking through some current events in the school division, and then we have a budget and finance update for you this evening. So I am starting with the newsletter dated October 13th, so you get a sneak preview for tomorrow. First, it starts with calendar reminders. Tomorrow is an early dismissal for all of our students at 12 noon, and the remainder of the day is a teacher work day. That's because the quarter is ending, so teachers are preparing report cards, which will go out on October 23rd. You can also see our reminder that we'd love for our community and our families to remember that chronic absenteeism is defined as missing 10% of the school year for any reason. That is about 18 days per school year, and it's really important that our students come to school every day so that they can be successful both in class and so they can learn what they need to know in order to be successful in life as well. So we appreciate everyone's help in encouraging our students to come to school every day. Also on page one, you can see a beautiful picture, at least I thought this was beautiful. There is a very large watermelon at the Northumberland Elementary School, and kindergarten student Jett Nikosha shared this watermelon with his whole entire elementary school family. That watermelon was shown at the state fair, and it did win a prize. So Jett was really excited, and we were really excited. And in that picture, you can see Jett standing with Mr. Reynolds, as well as our school resource officer, Keith Wilson. If you go to page two, this past Wednesday, we held our annual Dig Pink Night with our volleyball team. And I don't know if you can tell this, when our digital copy comes out tomorrow, you'll see that first picture. It's our girls volleyball team, and they're making the pink symbol for breast cancer awareness, and it's a ribbon that they made, and they have pink on it. It's a really beautiful picture. Down below, you can see other pictures from Dig Pink Night, and we appreciate everyone who volunteered to participate in that evening, as well as all of our business and community members who donated different door prizes, et cetera. On page three, you can see the middle school today. This actually was today. They had a culmination of Hispanic Heritage Month, and during lunchtime, they showcased different dances and cultural awareness. So they, I know they had a good time with that today. At the bottom of page three, you can see a golf team highlight, and we are congratulating the golf team in being named the state runner-up. So very proud of our boys for that accomplishment. On page four, last Friday, we had homecoming, and at the football game that evening, we named our homecoming queen Mia Farrell and homecoming king Martell Cockrell. So that's our homecoming queen and king. And we had a really fun spirit week last, the whole entire week. So we have pictures for you to look at from Spirit Week on pages four and five. We are conducting a budget survey, and we're blasting that out not just in the newsletter but by email. It's on our official social media websites, on our school division website. So we would really love to have students, teachers, staff, families, and community members complete the budget survey so that we can receive that feedback from you about what your budget priorities are. So again, that's on our website. It's a link on social media, and when you receive this update tomorrow, it's a live link in this message as well. At the bottom of page five, we're also offering a special education parent involvement survey. That's through the Virginia Department of Education. They've asked the 132 school divisions to push that out to families who have special education students, and they're trying to gather feedback for their use at the Department of Ed. At the bottom of page six, we have a special education advisory committee meeting that will take place this week from today, October 19th, at 4:00 PM at the Northumberland Public Library. Again, the acronym is SEAC. It's the Special Education Advisory Committee. And that really is, you know, there are a couple of other things here, but those are highlights from this week. If you turn to the next package I gave to you, that's really giving you details about the homecoming football game last Friday. We had a homecoming parade. I don't know if you were able to attend, but it started at the YMCA and it ended at the old courthouse. It was really fun. We also had a mom sale, so you know that we started our agriculture program at North umberland Middle and High, and the greenhouse is open, and we had a mom sale. There are still some moms left, so if you'd like to stop by, I'll be happy to help you out if you'd like to have a mom. And let's see what else. The roof replacement is well underway. We thank Drew and Mr. Tadler for all of their hard work. We have a visit. If you look at page five, Mr. Haney and his pups came to see the roof, so we did a special shout-out to them. Max and Millie were in that particular snap. And then we did a status check on the roof, so you have some things about that. And I feel like that pretty much summarizes last week. So at this time, I'm gonna turn this over to Mrs. Tara Booth for our finance update.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
Northumberland County Public Schools had multiple grant awards with an end date of September 30th, 2023. And although we have until mid-November to request reimbursements for these expenses, we are almost complete with that. We have closed out Title I for awards 2020 and 2021. We've closed out Title II for 2020 and 2021. We closed out Title V for award years 2020 and 21. We closed out IDEA Section 619 and 611 for award year 2021, and we've closed out S.R. II. We're finishing up the reimbursements for Title IV. Our 2020 award year has $7,731.49 remaining to be reimbursed, and our 2021 award year has $7,774.14 remaining to reimburse. So just over $15,000 there. And we're also in the process of filing our reimbursements for Perkins Title V in the amount of $35,399.52. And once that done, once those reimbursements are done, we'll be completely caught up. And we've also already begun our reimbursements for the current fiscal year. We're still waiting to hear from the Virginia Department of Education for some guidance on House Bill 6001. They have not released the calculation tool yet. We expected to have that this week, but as of 3:45 today, it was still not available. And then I also wanted to let you know that on October 2nd, the school board approved our 24-25 budget calendar. There is a date in there that we know is not correct because we, they put in a night of November 29th to meet with you all for a joint work session. I know we're working on trying to find a good date that works for everyone for that. But we have started that. As Dr. Wargo said, we're already getting input from the community and staff, parents, et cetera. We will be having a preliminary budget discussion at a public hearing on November 13th. Then on November 20th, a week later, that's the Monday before Thanksgiving, we'll have our first budget work session at 2:30 PM. Then hopefully, within the next two weeks there, we'll have our joint budget work session with you. And then our second work session for the school board is scheduled for December 5th at 2:00 PM. And then on December 11th, we're hoping to have a draft of the budget for you. Excuse me, December 5th is the school board budget work session after our meeting with you, and they're hoping to approve the budget at the January meeting to the best of their ability. We obviously won't have all of our revenue information at that point, but we will be able to have all of the expenditure side complete.
All right. Anyone have any questions?
I've got a few.
All right. Go ahead.
Ms. Wargo, in the echo, there was an article in there, says Virginia budget puts millions towards support staff due to the struggle of the school systems trying to find teachers. Anyhow, the state evidently has got $152 million that they put in toward that. And it states in there that for every thousand students, it's 21 support positions, and they're gonna increase up to 24 support positions for the schools. I guess my question is, have you received any information on that?
Mr. Brand, the last, we had a meeting, I believe, when the tropical storm was, it was a Friday of that tropical storm that came through, and it was with the state superintendent. And they spent a lot of time on all-in tutoring in Virginia, looking at student learning loss. And they're, based on a calc tool, we are receiving money to do during the day tutoring for its elementary and middle school students. We are allowed to hire teachers who perhaps are on planning to help with this because they're looking to have twice as many adult tutors to address the learning loss that's occurred since the pandemic. With that said, the teacher then would, if they do participate in the all-in tutoring, then they would have to add time onto the end of the day for their planning that they would be giving up in order to participate. I can bring you more information. It is on the Virginia Department of Education website, and the state superintendent, there's a document, and it's called the playbook, and it's the state superintendent, Dr. Kuns has worked with Governor Yonkin on all of this, so you're going to be hearing more and more about that. We are submitting a plan early next week. Each school division has to submit a plan for how to use those funds, according to the playbook.
What is your ratio to your students now for a thousand? How many staff positions do you have?
I didn't bring that information today, but I can...
Okay.
...put that together.
And can you update us as this moves along?
Yes, sir.
And will that be any impact on the county budget for this? Is the state gonna completely cover this, or is this something that they're gonna all of a sudden say, okay, county, Northumberland, you gotta ante up and...
The state, from my understanding, is covering it.
Okay.
So it should not have a local impact. It is important to note that we would never want to supplant, so that's intended to be an additional program, and we have to follow the recommendations in the playbook that was issued by the Department of Ed, who's collaborating with the Governor Yonkin's office on it.
And I got one more question.
Go ahead.
Yeah, Ag Department, if someone wants to make a donation specifically to the Ag program, what is the correct way of doing that to make sure that what they donate or the funds that they donate goes to that program?
So you would write a check in the amount. It can be made to Northumberland Middle School or Northumberland High School. Both of those programs participate, so if you wanted to tease out anything like that, you might want to divide the money and write it. And then you would also attach a note that says how you would like it to be used. For example, I would like this donation to go to our agriculture education program at the high school. What happens then? We have a policy. It's a donation policy, so the donations go on our next school board meeting for approval. Some donors like to be anonymous, which is absolutely fine. Other donors do not mind if we thank them publicly, so it's up to you whether you would include your name with that donation.
Okay.
And then that gets recorded in our school board minutes that go into a press release as well. So there's a lot of documentation, and obviously then we would put those funds in the correct category and line item of the budget, specifically agriculture education.
You finished?
That's all I got.
All right. Okay. Dr. Wargo, do we have a PTA?
We do. It's not always called PTA. At the elementary and middle school, it's called the Parent-Family Organization, so it's a PFO, because you know, public educators like to use these crazy acronyms, but it's the same idea as a PTA. But theirs is a PFO, Parent-Family Organization. And then at the high school, they call it the, hang on for a second, it's a Family Advisory Committee. So you may see an acronym, which is FAC. We have put all of those dates and times and locations together, and they are on our website in two locations, because I believe we heard input that that wasn't as visible as, you know, it could be. So we have been working on that. And I had that information in tomorrow's newsletter, except the graphic that they put together accidentally had January 2023 listed instead of 2024. So we're gonna work on that, because we didn't find that out till the end of today, when I was getting ready for your meeting, and we'll have it in next week's message as well. So you're gonna see those dates blasting out. I call it blasting out, but we send it in a variety of ways, trying to make sure that everybody can see it and access the information.
Okay. You know, you have a lot of grandparents raising kids in this county. Some of those ways that you, how do you contact, are the teachers calling some of these people?
Yes.
That may not have some of the update computers or whatever?
Yes. So we have a calling system. So an example is this evening, a call is going out to remind parents that tomorrow is an early dismissal at noon. We'll also be sending out a message by phone that next Thursday is the Special Education Advisory Committee meeting at 4:00 PM, et cetera. So these meetings go out by phone. Also, we still use paper as well. A lot of people don't want paper these days, but we do have stakeholders, especially our grandparents, you know, they would prefer paper, so that goes home in paper as well.
Do we have an attendance problem in either school?
That's a good question. I would, I would say that every school division in the Commonwealth and probably in the United States, we do struggle with attendance, and that's why you heard me talk about the importance of encouraging all of our children to come to school. So even if you don't have kids at school, you probably are connected to students in your neighborhood, or students in your churches, or students, you know, maybe you're an uncle or aunt or whatever. So it's important to have those conversations, and if you're friends with parents, to have that conversation in a supportive way to encourage everyone to try to have students come to school. Since the pandemic, we all remember when, you know, it was Monday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Thursday, or whatever, there were two groups of kids coming for two days per week because of the pandemic. My opinion, that developed some habits where it made coming to school on a regular basis for some students and families, that became problematic. So there is a definite focus on trying to encourage everyone to come to school every day, as much as possible. We understand that if you're, if a child is sick or, you know, they can't.
Didn't we give kids snacks sometime to count on on the weekend?
We do all kinds of things. We have free breakfast and lunches, and then if, for our after-school programs, there is also the free snacks that go for students. And then for any child who needs meals during the weekend, we also do some things, working with families to send home meals for the weekend. with families to send home meals for the weekend. So if any family, you know, there are lots of ways to reach out to us. I always publish my cellphone, as well as my email and all of my correspondence. They can reach out directly to me. They have school counselors, they have school principals. So there are lots of avenues to request that additional assistance in a private manner. And if, if people weren't comfortable contacting us, they can always contact you, and then you can connect me with the, anyone who's in need of anything. Because we try to be as supportive as possible for all of our students and families.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I have one.
All right.
A while back, when your October 2nd press release was put out, I took a look at it. And you even mentioned my question here in your report. October 3rd to November 1, seeking input, and you're including students, families, and the entire community. And I took a look at the Google form that you had put out there. It collects a little bit of information about folks. But the thing that I'm having a problem with is that in all of my educational career, I've never seen students, families, and solicitations put out to the community. Is this normal?
Yes.
Because I, I got to tell you, I'll be honest with you. I look at this, and to me, it reads like Santa Claus is part of the budgetary process, is, is what I, what I first saw, when I, when I saw this. It was almost impossible for me to escape that. So can you enlighten me?
We just are trying to be inclusive. A lot of times, you know, I feel like students, sometimes we don't ask them for their input, and they are the children who come to our school every day. And sometimes they have a unique perspective about needs that perhaps the adults don't always see. So we do try to gather all of the input, and then the board looks at it, both boards look at it, and set priorities for, you know, what should be included in the budget.
And, and another aspect of this very same thing, in all cases, I would have thought that monitoring needs and wants for budgetary perspective would have been an ongoing process, rather than a big bang in, in one small period of time. Is, is there, is it? And if it's not, I'm trying to marry this up with, with, you know how I am, I do processes.
That's right. And we appreciate that, Mr. Johnson. Yes, we internally monitor, ongoing, on a monthly basis, as well as reflecting on the years, the past. In addition, we do have that period carved out for public input, for the upcoming budget planning that we're about to embark on. So my answer to your question was yes, we do monitoring monthly. And yes, we're looking for input from other perspectives to be as inclusive as we can.
Okay.
I think that was part of a discussion in the joint meeting we had, the special committee, is that, as they put this out, that it is offered to the community as well for their input. So this is just a tool and a resource for, for the community, for the citizens, to be able to voice their opinion as well, not just the students and the parents and the grandparents. So this is opened up. Hopefully, people will take advantage of it and, and send in their comments.
And if somebody isn't able to do that electronically, then, you know, reach out, and you can write it down, or you can meet with us, and we'll write it down and include it. You know, like I said, we're here to be supportive and make sure we capture everyone's thoughts on the budget planning.
Anything else, Ms. Johnson?
I'm good.
Tom?
That's, well, I, when Ms. Booth mentioned about the reimbursements, you mentioned fiscal year is going all the way back to 2020. I'm kind of surprised that things are open for that long.
So when we get grants, they're typically open for two years. So there were grants that were awarded in 2020 that typically would have ended in 2022. However, because of COVID, they extended that year to go until the end of '23. So for the 2020 grants and the 2021 grants, the money that was awarded then, they each ended September 30th of 2023.
But funds were expended during those times, but not now being sought reimbursed until just now?
Some of that is correct, yes.
So the county, just like we got a statement of accounts, obviously, with all the reimbursement that's been done, we're very much over last year.
Correct.
And it, to me, is disconcerting that the county itself, not school board, because obviously it's reimbursed, but is money that's been out that long and not sought to be recaptured as expended. To me, if you spend it, go for it. Just because then it helps balance our budget doesn't make us have to consider raising taxes or borrowing money to things. So I appreciate you for getting that. What I'd like for you to do is, from July the 1st forward, just give to Mr. Tadlock an amount that you have requested, the $15,000, that's mine. I'm more worried about how much is accounts payable now, so we know how much more can be coming in.
Yes, as we're, as we've been doing, as you know, we've been doing a lot of backtracking, trying to get everything straight. So our goal, now that almost all of the reimbursements are done, is to bring, to Mr. Tadlock, to bring to you all, hopefully at the November meeting, the money that we need to have re-appropriated
Yeah.
for the current year.
I understand the new grants you got, and like, that's, I'm more worried about the grants that are back in the past, that we spent the money for, we haven't gotten it in yet.
I think at this point, there's not a lot of that left, because we've been working really hard to be caught up. And I know that we've already done some reimbursements for money that's been spent this fiscal year. So we are trying to catch up, and then also trying to stay on track moving forward. But I will bring that information.
All right. Dr. Walgo, you mentioned the 10% absenteeism, 18 days. Is that 10% rolling? Or is it 18 days, a kid misses 18 days in the first school month, do you wait until then? Having been a juvenile operation, I worry about that. Do you look at if it's, they've attended school for 20 days, and they've missed three?
Yes.
Do you start addressing it then and not wait until they accumulate so much?
Correct. So exactly what you just said, and I probably should have included, because when we first started doing these meetings, we meet once a week. I attend the meetings, it's our director of instruction, and then the building principal. So we have three meetings every week, I believe usually on Tuesday. We start at the middle, they're about a half hour long. Then we go to the high school, and then it's elementary. We're done by like 11, if noon at the latest. So we're, we have spreadsheets, Google Sheets where they're shareable. We can take attendance from our Power School program. We capture it in our Google Sheets, and then we have columns that are calculating. Letters go home, attendance meetings are set up. If we have non-resident students who are taking a lot of resources from us because they can't get to school, we send them back to their home counties, because that's not okay either. So it's a lot of work, but we have made accreditation in all of our schools, full accreditation, and attendance is a piece of the accreditation.
Oh, yeah.
So that's why you hear me doing a small informational message, if you can have those conversations, to encourage all students to come to school. Our biggest challenge typically is at the high school, because high school students can drive, and they do things, and they are very capable of making decisions that not everyone is aware of all the time. So that is a challenge. But we're working on attendance incentives, and just trying to meet the needs of our students, and making sure, hopefully, that they're in school.
Well, for those who drive to school, an incentive is to come to school, or else you lose that privilege.
That's right.
I mean, that's a privilege. Driving is a privilege.
Yes, sir.
The judges will tell you, driving is a privilege, not a right.
That's right.
But especially if it's somebody who's driving to school, when everybody's paying for school buses to ride up and down the road, that's, they, that should be tolerated a lot less for them. And also, the same thing with out-of-county students. That's a privilege that's granted by the school board for that purpose. They should not get away with hardly any absences.
And that's why we have them go back to their home county if that is an issue.
And especially unless it's Lancaster, everybody else's, it costs us more than we get because of the composite index scenario. And the other thing is, does Northumberland County school system follow the minimum staffing as by the SOQs and SOAs? No. No school system in Virginia will go by what they are paying you. You're always staffed higher, right?
I can bring you that information.
Well, I, I know no school system has just what the state pays you. Because, and then that's why about the support staff, I have to wonder, are they going to pay 100%? Or are they going to then tie that into the composite index? Normally, that's how they do things. Because I remember with school, like elementary, with principals, you had to have X number of students per that, and the only school system, only school in Northumberland that complied with was elementary. But then I worked as juvenile probation, you'd have juvenile correctional officer with correctional officers, and they'd have less than 300 students, and they have two assistant principals.
So I believe you're referring to the standards of accreditation. Yeah, it's complicated.
Yeah. All right.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Could you, could you bring the, the enrollment for each school the next time you come?
Yes, sir. I could send that over to Mr. Tadlock tomorrow, and he can send it out to you, so you have it right away.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Next item would be the county administrative report. Ms. Tadlock?
Yes, sir. For the month of September, we had 10 new structures. Total construction cost for the month was $6.9 million. Total construction cost year-to-date, $44.7 million, which we are below this time last year, approximately $1.7 million. Next item I have is with the Community Services Board. CSB met with Chief Balderson, Jackie Clayton, and me to discuss how they could assist during emergency operations. In your packet, you do have a memorandum of agreement. The Commonwealth of Virginia has charged the Department of Behavioral Health and Development Services with the responsibility to coordinate behavioral health preparedness and response activities, integrating these efforts with state and local emergency management operations. CSB is in the process of updating their emergency management and disaster response plan. And they've put forward this, this memorandum of agreement with the, the county to assist us.
All right.
Would the date be July the 1st, since today is October the 12th?
We would modify that date.
Okay. I didn't know, no, no, retroactive application.
No, I, I think this was, we had met, we met back in August, I believe. And weren't able to get it on the agenda last month, so some time has passed. That's why it has a hold of date on it.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve this memorandum of agreement reflecting today's date.
Okay. I got a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Excuse me. Got a motion and a second? Do I have any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Next item I have is a contract for our webpage is up for renewal on November 1st. We originally had signed up with Unicode, and since that time, Civic Plus has bought out Unicode. With that acquisition there, our cost has increased for
Of course.
$780 increase. It was $2,800 per year, and now it's going to be $3,580. We did not, during the budget process, we did not budget for that increase. So what I'm asking for the board to do is do a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $780. To line item 1401-3,005.
All right, what's the pleasure, the board?
Move.
Second.
Move that we give that amount, $780?
Yes, sir.
All right, so your motion is to approve $780.
That's right.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All right. I have a motion and a second. Do I have any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against? All right.
Next item I have is NMS-NHS drain field update. The existing treatment plant at the middle high school needs to be updated. We've been working with Rob Mangrum of Mangrum Consulting and designed to explore several options. And the latest report concept that has been worked on with Rob Mangrum and in communication with the Virginia Department of Health, is that what we would do is still run 1,000 gallons through the plant, but then push the remaining sewage over to the drain field at the elementary school. By doing that, some of the restrictions, criteria aren't as restrictive, and upgrades aren't as massive as if we keep the current plant as we currently have. What we would suggest is that if it's okay with the board, is to move forward with that bidding opportunity. We've been, like I said, we've been in discussions with Rob Mangrum, the engineer on the project. And he feels that by doing that, it would certainly save the, the county money for staffing and equipment upgrades and so forth. So if you all have any questions on that, we can try to get those answered for you. But we are looking at trying to use ARPA funds to pay for this upgrade. And in talking with Rob Mangrum, the timing of it, we need to start the bidding process now to get that in the queue for construction next spring, summertime for him.
So do we have a, a specific design in mind that we would use for the basis of putting out for bid?
We do. And unfortunately, Rob Mangrum had a family emergency. And we were, he was hoping to have a, more of a detailed information for us, but we did not have that, that packet. But we can get that to the board as soon as we get that information.
What, what kind of timing window are we talking about as far as any lost opportunities? You mentioned that we've, there's, gave the impression that there's a, a point of not being able to be optimal.
If, as far as from a cost perspective, it's from, we're looking at using the ARPA funding, and they will expire next, next year. So from that standpoint, that's the, that's the biggest timeframe that we're up against right now. Now, as far as the, the plant itself, I, I don't have a dollar value as far as the The equipment that it would be needed is, with phosphorus nitrogen and those processes, it gets rather expensive to, to try and do that. There was an initial report that Rob Mangrum had put out, and I can get a copy of that to you. But that compared doing away completely with the plant itself. So that plan has altered a little bit, but I, that would be a good basis. I can get that information to you.
Okay. Well, is this push coming from VDH and DEQ?
The, the plant is coming more from DEQ, the upgrades to the plant.
Yeah.
And when we receive that information, we were looking at other alternatives, rather than doing the upgrades to the plant. And then that's when we had to get in touch with VDH.
My only concern is, obviously, if you're going to pump effluent from the 1,000 gallons a day to the elementary drain field, are we going to impact on that longevity, and then be in a position of having to build a whole new plant for both, all three?
Yes. No, the, no, the 1,000 gallons is going through the, through the plant. The remaining of the effluent is going to the drain field. And after he ran, he ran all the calculations, and based on that 1,000 gallons per day going through the plant and not going to the elementary school, it's his best estimate that that drain field would support that additional effluent.
For how long?
For how long?
We can get some additional information.
I'm always concerned with DEQ, or in this case, Health Department, can't do that, and then you're gonna have to go to a plant.
You're right. What's the, what's the input per day in gallons?
I mean, are we doing a patch or we fixing the problem?
Sounds like patch.
We're kicking the can somewhere else.
Yeah, that sounds like it's putting off the inevitable.
I thought our whole idea was to abandon the plant and put it in a drain field. That's what we were talking about originally.
That, that's what we were originally talking about. And we were looking at that too from a staffing aspect to not have the plant. This would require minimal staffing as far as the plant is concerned.
Still requiring staffing. And that's what we were trying to do away with.
And when I say that, he had indicated that I think it was like one time a year that you would have to go down and do testing and, what was it? Twice a year for staff to go down and check on the plant. So currently, I think it's more on a daily basis. So it would significantly cut that time back.
Right. But we're still having to maintain that plant.
Yeah.
The costs are still bad. You've got equipment's gonna be failing. You've got equipment, if it's setting, not doing any work will fail much faster than a piece that's working every day. So that, that's some of the questions. But how many gallons per day? Why can't the, why can't the new field handle that floods? It needs to have more capacity and just to a certain limit.
All right. Well, we can get some more, more information and bring that back to you.
Yeah. Anyone else have any questions on it?
Yeah. My question is, was, apparently it sounds like the elementary drain field was overdesigned.
It's better to be overdesigned than under, or design right to its maximum limit.
But then if it's not being used too.
Yeah. But if it's overdesigned, you've got, you've got a much longer life on you. And drain fields don't come cheap anymore.
Not one that size.
No, it does not. And I don't want to go down and spend money into it now, then turn around and have to spend money into it 10 years down the line.
Yeah.
We will reach out to Rob Mangrum.
See if you can get him to come here and explain.
What we may need, if it's all right, we'll check with the timing with him, and we may need to have a special call meeting.
We can do that. We can do that.
Anytime you got a plan, DEQ can change your requirements. And I could just look at the Reedville Sanitary, just what they constantly dropping on us.
That's right.
And but if you put a new drain field, is the Health Department separation, the new standards, what's that gonna be too? Because we know they required so much just for the homeowner to do it. It's gonna be probably worse for a commercial slash public building.
And he's been in contact with VDH and working out the numbers and everything. So we'll, we'll touch base back with him. Next item I have is the Planning Commission requests permission to investigate revising the county's boathouse zoning ordinance to review whether we would allow boat canopies. Currently, under our current zoning ordinance, we do not allow boat canopies the way that our current definition reads. So they would just like the authorization from the board to review that matter and then send back a recommendation to the board.
What a recommendation, but then it would have to be acted on by the Planning Commission since it's a zoning ordinance change before the board can act.
They would have to advertise it for a public hearing. Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Long time ago, I was sitting in this courtroom when the ruling was made to not allow those things. It's gonna look kinda awkward if we go backwards on that. There was a lot of passionate discussion here in the boardroom.
That never happens in our boardroom.
I know that. I know. It's like going to a library coming here.
All right. What's the board?
Well, I'm saying they can investigate anything they want, but doesn't mean, the board can't act until it's advertised, and they then go forward.
That's right. I guess we need to send, you just tell them to go ahead and do what they think is necessary.
Well, if I can get specific action from the board to that.
Go ahead and advertise and do what they need as far as holding a hearing on to it.
All right. Is that in a form of a motion?
That's a motion. Do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
All right. Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Hold on, Mr. Henry.
Mr. Gregory?
With respect, Mr. Chair, I don't think they're asked, correct me if I'm wrong. I don't think they're asking for direction to advertise anything or to conduct a public hearing. They're asking for, if they can investigate, the possibility of making an amendment to the zoning ordinance to allow for these canopies. That's all they're asking for at this point.
All right.
So if, so all the board needs to do is take action to direct the Planning Commission to do what they asked to do.
All right. At their last Planning Commission meeting, they had a pretty good little discussion on this. And you kind of pick up some members of four, some don't know yet. They wanna, they want more discussion on to it, but they were unsure of what to do. But they wanted to send it back to the board for direction. Now, you correct me if I'm wrong. So would you recommend that I withdraw my motion?
You could, if it's your, if it's your desire. I mean, I don't.
I don't want to do it wrong.
You can amend it.
I can amend it to send it back.
You can withdraw it, or you can amend it, or you can make, or you could let the motion die for lack of a second and make a new motion.
I already got a second.
Okay, okay. I'm sorry. Or you could have a vote on your motion. You could do any of those things.
All right. If I amend my motion just to send it back, let them
Investigate.
Investigate. That's all right with my second. All right. I'll make my motion to send it back to them to investigate. And we have a second.
Just a curiosity. I noticed in the documentation that was sent out that these are soft canopies as opposed to hard. Perhaps it would be worth having them investigate both.
Currently got hard.
They were, they were talking about, it's, it's a, for the members who don't know, it's a canvas, number canvas. And it's just stretched over that canvas, just like a T-top on a boat is. Basically the same thing. Stretched over, life is probably 10, 12 years over this. Then you just recanvass it. Metal frame. I know saltwater's gonna eat the frame up, but
Sure.
You gotta, you gotta sell parts. Thank you, Mr. Gregory. All right. I got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. And all those against? All right. Motion passes.
All right. Just to update the board, there was a discussion at the last meeting to look further into building a five-year plan, looking at the old sheriff's office, the old school board office, and spacing. Staff has started that process, and we're looking into that. So. Next item I have is Eleon Construction is completed as of yesterday. The EVB roof, it's currently waiting or pending HDH inspection, which is the engineer that we have on board. The Mule High manufacturer had their inspection today. It did pass. There were no punch list items related to that installation. They, Levalle HDH engineer will be here next Thursday for the substantial completion and create a punch list if there's any other items to be resolved. Air quality testing will be performed after we get everything straight. Last item I have is just to make you aware that the Northern Neck Planning District Commission Regional Meeting, Quarterly Meeting will be Monday, October 16th, 2023 at 5:30 PM, and that will be at Willabees Cafe. And Mr. Carr, with all points, broadband will be there providing an update.
Are board members invited to that?
They are.
Okay. It was a little.
Where is that now?
At Willabees.
Probably one of the last meals.
Same, same thing I got.
Do you need any information to you to let them know who's coming?
If there's interested board members, just let me know, and I can let Mr. Davis know. And so he has a head count.
Yeah, I'll be running it.
What was that, Jim?
I'll be overseeing. I'll be running it.
All right. What else you have, Mr. Tadlock?
That's all I have.
Nothing else? You're gonna short date.
Yes, sir.
Are you complaining?
No, not complaining. Sometimes you're very lengthy.
I don't. So all the people are too.
So you're ready for the board?
All right. Now, well, those next items is the board's supervisor items. Our first item on the agenda is approval to check register.
A move that we approve.
All right. I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on that? If not, all those in favor say aye. All right. Next item is our board comments. And we'll start with Mr. Johnson. Any comments, Mr. Johnson?
Nothing necessarily today.
All right. Mr. Law?
Yes. Mr. Tadlock, all we need is the inspection for the EVB bank.
The roof has been completed, yes, sir. And the engineer will be on site next Thursday for the final inspection.
Okay. What's the update on the old school board office?
That's part of the review process that we're going through. Staff has started related to the buildings that we have and spacing and so forth.
Okay. You know, last meeting, I told you if you could get some committee to check on some of this land that we have, that we could put, you know, we need to try to get something here, you know. We had Walmart, seven years ago. We need some type of businesses in this county. Walmart, they have retirement, they have so many things that would keep young people here, you know. That's something we really need. Because North Bumming and Lancaster has two of the oldest by age in Virginia, 65 and older. So a lot of young people are leaving because we don't have the jobs that pay benefits. So it'd be good if we could check and see if we can get something here that keep these young people here that pay benefits. We know they pay social security, but we're gonna need some benefits too beyond social security. That's very important. So if you could do that, I sure would appreciate it. Thank you.
I think the problem is a little bit bigger. I agree with you, but I think the problem is a little bit bigger. Right now, the employment pool here is so small. A lot of companies that would show up here and come here don't see good opportunity in the employee pool that we offer.
You know, about 10 or 12 years ago, somebody said we couldn't get a Burger King. That was a lie. I had the people down from the Burger King with a group of people, some from the northern part. And all we had to come up with was a $100,000. And one side had that half, the other side didn't. So you can get, you can get them here, and you can get people to work. You'll be surprised how many young people we can get here if we have the jobs. They're leaving for the job. I've had several young people that I had the opportunity to teach that went north, DC, Baltimore, 5 o'clock in the morning. Now they retired because they had the benefits beyond social security. And in this county, majority of the people when they work, there's no benefits. All they receive, I have worked with people, $300 a month, social security. Could you make it on that? It's a blessing. It's a blessing that someone makes it. So that's where we need these jobs where people can make a good living.
I don't think anybody disagrees that we need jobs.
Right.
I just think we need to build the employment pool as well. It's and right now, our pool of employees is a little bit weak.
That's all I have.
Mr. Brand?
I've got several things, but I'll be quick. Do we have any news on the Dotlett Road County property with the county right of way? Gregory, have you?
I'm sorry, Mr. Brand. Yeah, we, I don't have a clear answer for you yet. I'll do my best to get it to you.
This is almost a year that this has been going on.
I'm sorry.
And we need to get this resolved because we're already starting to have issues between a landowner and some hunters. And we don't need that to escalate into something more than just a few words. And I want to make sure, I'm not representing, I don't want the county to represent any landowner other than we need to make sure that our right of way is protected and the county's protected. And that's, that's what I want to.
You're talking about the property was purchased with Lancaster and Richmond County? And that makes it a little bit complex. That makes it more difficult because
It does.
It's two other counties we don't have sole control over.
Right. It does. But we just, we got an issue with the right of way going in there supposedly, and it's causing some problems Really? Some folks. And we need to get it resolved. And we don't need to be anybody's attorney, but we need to make sure that the county's interest is taken care of. The boat at Lodge Creek in Luttrell, I talked with you about that, but getting a lot of phone calls on that. Citizens are not happy that the boat was drug up on the shoreline and just left at a rock. It's really not the place for that boat to be left. And, you know, we promote that as a peer, the people can go and fish and they put their boats over, but yet we're gonna allow a boat to stay at a rock. And that's, that's not right. We need to try and get that relocated if we can.
Yeah. I'll follow up with, I got your call yesterday, and we'll follow up with VMRC on that as well.
And we've had, we've had several talks about this audit with the school budget and all, and it's gone nowhere. And we need to, the budget's, the budget's right around the corner again. We still got citizens that are not satisfied. And my comment was, we need to have this audit done. And if the school budget is correct, it's correct. If it's not, we need to get it straight. But citizens have concerns, they have questions. We in the middle of it. We need to make sure that we're doing what we are supposed to be doing and make sure things are right. We need to have this audit complete. And I'm ready to make a motion that we contact three firms and see how much forensic examination would cost. Some people call it an audit. I hear they're different. But I think we need to reach out to some firms and let's see how much it will cost. We all voted on this and supported this, but it's like a cheap sparkle you get at 4th of July. It's hard to get lit, and once you get it going, it burns bright for a few seconds, and it goes to nothing. And we need to move forward.
Yes, we do.
Do we have audits on all the other?
Well, when this opens up, it'll, the county would probably be part of it too.
Yeah.
It would have to be. It would be impossible for it not to be.
Right. But we're not doing our job if we're not trying to get these issues resolved. And I think we owe it to the school system, and we owe it to the citizens.
Yes. I agree completely.
All right. You can make the motion.
That is my motion.
That is your motion. All right. So you have a second on to it.
Well, my, we have all the conversations.
Well, it would probably, it was gonna involve the county.
It wouldn't do any good to not be holistic about it. You'd have to do it all.
Do it all.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any of discussion? I know discussion's being carried on, but is there any of it?
Well, it is a question of the scope of work if they hired. How many entities, agencies would be involved?
How many entities, agencies would be involved? Because obviously, that's, nobody's gonna be able to bid if they don't know how much work they have to do.
Yeah.
Do they basically take the county audit and pull in everybody who's come into that and that, because that means they're gonna have to look at the county's books, school books, other things too. I mean, that's what we've gotta, that's what the, any forensic auditor or whatever you wanna call them is gonna wanna know. What is my scope of work?
Well, I believe the reality of that is gonna end up being achieved through consult with the experts. We're gonna end up having to talk to them before we actually award any kind of a contract. We're not forensic examiners here on this board. The only way to actually achieve the kind of knowledge you're looking for is to actually talk to the same people that we would ultimately be hiring.
Sounds like to put it out for negotiation. As opposed to a bid.
I agree on that.
Well.
Competitive negotiation.
What shall they suggest? We got to have some scope, some kind of way, but, but we need, we need to talk, we need to talk to some firms to see what could be done.
They will provide the guidance.
Yeah, that's what we need, is guidance from them.
Right.
And then we can make a decision of who we want to do.
That's the best way.
Just make sure we, we are on, this is a separate audit, what you're speaking about with.
Yeah, that's right.
Robinson, Farmer, Cox, and we're going through that.
Yes, yes.
Those procedures now for the fiscal year twenty-three audit. So I, just making sure it's, it's gonna be on top of, top of that, and we're already in the middle of, of that specific audit, too.
And it'll be somebody.
That audit will be complete before we even get squared away with connection.
Yeah, I, I just giving you timeframe because that, that is due December.
Right. And they would, Robinson, Cox, Farmer would not be considered for this audit.
So I, I would submit that any reputable auditing firm would probably identify the optimal time for starting the work. So the best thing to do at this point would be to move forward with, with talking to them.
Good point.
And, Brandon, you said three?
I would do three, or if you wanted to do more, that's fine, but.
Three, three is a.
I'm, I'm just, I'm just asking, the number was three, which is fine. I don't, I don't, we shouldn't do any less.
What, instead of, why don't we issue an RFP based off of?
That's what I would say.
Or, rather than reaching out to individual firms, that, that's up to the board, however you want to.
I have a question on that suggestion.
Mr. Gregory, your comments, please?
I, I'm just having a little sidebar with Mr. Tadlock, trying to understand exactly what your, what the board is after. I mean, it, this is, this would be in addition to the regular audit that's required by law.
It's a totally separate type of audit. It's not the same.
What is it?
Um, the forensic examination, so you've got, we've got one audit that says, the money went from point A and it showed up in point B. The forensic audit or examination, if you will, identifies everywhere that it touched along the way and validates that it was true and appropriate. And so that would be outside the scope of like the, the audit that gets presented to the board every year from like the school board's audit. It's much more detailed.
And it would generally be July one to June the thirtieth, every transaction? Whereas this audit is one or two months that they look at and the total figures. This is that, forensic audits are extremely expensive.
Yes.
Because it is everything along the way.
So you, you want to request, uh, for direct staff to prepare an RFP for firms to conduct a forensic audit of the school system, the school division or the entire county?
The entire county. The entire budget, I think would be the overall best way to go.
You wouldn't be able to, you wouldn't gain anything of much value if all you did was isolated to the schools.
Right.
And, and we don't need to single.
Right, we don't need to single anybody.
That's right.
So, um, it's a holistic approach. It, it's gonna cover in large part the entire county's budget.
Right.
So if I have to amend my.
Admon your motion for RFP.
That, that's, I will do that, if that will work better.
I second it.
Can they get their information?
Well, I would say prepare it and then present it.
I hope we prepare a draft of the RFP and get that to the board to make sure it covers what you all are looking for.
Okay.
Um, not to delay this, but I, we just wanna make sure we've, we've got covered what, what it is that you're, you're trying to accomplish.
Can we call it an RFQ instead of an RFP?
A request for qualifications?
Quote.
Request for quote. I, my understanding of what an RFQ is, is a request for qualifications. And a request for qualifications would be, you're requesting firms to submit their qualifications to do a specific, to do, to do a, a job, whether that's winds up being an RFP or whether it winds up being an IT, an invitation to bid, but typically it goes in the RFP direction because you're asking, you're basically asking for firms to identify themselves and their qualifications for, for doing a, a job.
Sorry, in the federal government, my.
Get the federal government now.
It's RFQ is a request for quote.
Okay.
And it usually starts off, the, the process would usually start off with some interactions with those that are gonna provide the quote.
Well, as long as it covers all auditions, not just, pick one.
Yeah.
What do we want?
All right, so what's, what's your pleasure of board on a motion? Oh, what should we do? We're hanging on a motion, then we're hanging on doing, getting some information, sending that to the board, so which way are we gonna go?
Motion to understand is to do an RFP. Now, if we wanna take.
Motion's still on the floor.
Right, and if we wanted to go up to the RFP, that the motion's still on the floor, and go with what Mr. Tadlock said, let, let him bring a draft back, then we approve it. But we need to.
I don't know what the timeframe is on getting a draft back.
No later than next month.
Yeah. Yeah, it would have to be no later than next month.
Next month.
Sooner would be better.
Unless he decides to have a call, neither, I mean.
All right. So you wanna.
What's best for him?
You wanna withdraw your motion or you wanna leave the motion? Can't have both.
So let's do an amendment. If you wanna go up on RFP.
All right.
An amendment to have a draft back before the board next month.
Yes.
All right.
And the board will approve it or add additions or corrections to it and move forward from there.
I think that's just the, a detailing of the process that you can do anyway.
That's, that's just part of the process.
Speak up a little bit more, I'm hot in here.
I think that would be a detailing of the process as it would go anyway. So the draft would have to be part of the process, so the motion can stand as it is.
Yes.
All right, so that's your motion.
Yes, sir.
Second.
All right, we've got multiple seconds here. We've got three different seconds.
Mr. Long, he don't know the seconds.
I'm doing all the drawings.
I think it is.
So it's no problem on seconds on this.
Okay. He can keep it.
Yeah, we've, we've.
Long as we get it done.
We've all seconded it.
As long as we get it done.
As long as we get it done, let's go.
All right. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, Mr. Tadlock.
All right. I got a couple more things and I'll be quiet.
You said it was gonna be quick.
I'm, I'm gonna make it quick. Y'all have made it lengthy, hey. Getting ready to do a budget. And we talked back in July, June or July, but the budget process needed to change. We need to see some ideas and examples of what we're gonna be looking at for the budget, have what processes, how's it gonna change? And everybody needs to submit the same style or same type of budget before the board this year. We had those discussions. And that some changes need to be made to the budget process, so we need to see some updates, we need to see some changes, we need to see the process, at the end result, what it's gonna look like when it starts coming before us for our approval.
That's an important part of the first motion.
You got it.
When do you expect to start working for a budget?
We.
Working on a budget, put it that way.
Yeah, we, we typically send out our initial letters, November, December timeframe. We do have the ClearGov software new this year. I know Mary Dickinson in the office has been inputting data into that system. Mr. Basie and I are looking at the capital improvement side of things. I know Mr. Basie has sent out the capital improvement letters to departments. So we are looking at that software, trying to use that, get up to speed with that and, and utilize that for the departments this year.
Okay. And we had our first joint committee meeting with citizens, representatives from the school and from the board supervisors and Speaker and Mr. Blizzard are gonna kinda head the committee up, and we're gonna work on the budget process and getting information back to the boards. I would like to see a, a, a time in our agenda to where we could actually have, we could brief the board and the citizens on that meeting, because that's one thing that we said that we were gonna do in that joint meeting, is as we had our meeting, committee meetings, that we were gonna come back and update the rest of the board members and the citizens that's, that's at the board meeting. So we need a slot somewhere or another in the, on the agenda to be able to, to do that update, to have that update.
Uh, what's the procedure of getting the information to the citizens?
That's all gonna be online. It's gonna be on the county website, and it's gonna be on the school website.
Find other ways.
Well, we'll give you some flowers and let you stand out on the corner of the handle.
No, what I'm saying now, I'm gonna tell you, no, I'm, look, you have to have other ways because you got a county that's sixty-five and older.
You have one here.
Don't have computers.
Yes.
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
Jim, you're gonna have, you're gonna have to speak up. Speak into your microphones.
We have to find other ways because we have elderly people, don't have those, I mentioned it, don't have those instruments.
Okay.
To find out. We gotta, we gotta find other ways to get that information out to the total community, not just a part.
Well, that will be, with Speaker. Get, put that on our, on our agenda for our next meeting is one of the topics for conversation is, how can we reach out to more people other than.
Uh, jet set.
The internet and.
We've already started that, too, sir.
Already started that process. So, so we will come back and update you on that, Mr. Long, with some ideas on, on our next meeting on what we can do to reach more people.
I gotta reach more people?
And, uh, believe it or not, that's all I got.
All right. It was short.
I tried.
Tom?
Uh, just two things. On some of those properties that are county-owned, uh, I know Mr. Tadlock may know, but some of the properties were given to the county because their land wouldn't perk. So you could try to sell it, but you're not necessarily gonna get fair market value. Like I know that piece down by Damrin's Marsh Preserve, seventeen, eighteen acres, was given because it doesn't perk. So it's a question of, I mean, there was a, looked at a possibly making a boat ramp or something like that, but it's so shallow around there, it wouldn't do much. But that's something, like I know some properties in River Bennett Estates, the same way, just some of the land was given, they didn't wanna pay taxes on something they couldn't use. But that need to be consideration of properties, just don't hold on to them and get anything for what it's good, but, um, the, um, that's all I have. I had something, but I changed my mind. I wanna be short for change.
All right. All right, I guess that's all the board comments at this time. The next item on the agenda is public comments.
Take a break.
Let's get public comments first.
All right.
All right, um, public comments. Anyone like to speak on any issue tonight? Please come on up. Come on up.
Dr. Perry Pika, Stillwater Drive, Meatsville. I would like to applaud the board for the recommendation on the audit. The, I would also like to applaud the school board and the school system for their transparency. Right now, there is a part of an audit letter that is on the school board's site that, if you remember this county, it's rather frightening, and you will never get to the root of those issues until you do this other type of audit. So what the current auditors have uncovered is that there is a severe, what they call a severe risk for misappropriation, because there are not the internal controls in place to protect the taxpayer dollars. It's not the first time that has shown up in an audit report. There's also a second piece of that report that identifies, um, uh, some potential ways for, uh, people to get money, you can write yourself a check, um, which is a little odd when it comes to taxpayer dollars. So I, I applaud the school board for posting that information on the audit because that is not something that is complimentary, it is absolutely something that's essential to transparency. And I applaud the board for trying to dig into this because you won't get into the root cause of those problems with the type of audit that you have in place. And the request for, um, quotes, which is, is a familiar term for me, would allow you to have a conversation with the auditors about what the scope, the actual scope of the audit would be, complete county budget, because frankly, the school was deficit spending for the first three months of this year. There were no appropriations listed on their website, yet there was money going out the door, so the county could not have been doing reconciliations or it would have found that you were deficit spending, which I don't actually think you can do. The second piece of information, I was privileged to attend the, a meeting with the Federal Reserve President and CEO from Richmond. He came down, and I was waving the Northumberland County flag as my economic development commission hat, and he was talking about housing, talking about jobs. It was a roundtable of business owners and those on the planning commission and different organizations made some really great contacts there, and the, the Federal Reserve was on a listening tour to talk about what they might potentially do with interest rates. So I was able to share with them some of the, the concerns that we have from the North umberland County side, most of the representatives there from Lancaster County, and so I just wanted to share that, and thank you for the time.
Thank you. Think we have a sign up sheet here, if we have anybody on it. Thank you, ma'am. Don't have anybody on sign up sheet. Anyone else like to make a public comment tonight? Anyone else like to make a public comment? Yes, come on up, sir.
My name is, uh, Thomas Hudnem from Reeser, Virginia. Mr. Long touched on something just a few minutes ago about the age of this county. We are battling in need of another healthcare facility in this county other than bond secure. People get sick, they have to go to the emergency room. We have an aging population. He was saying sixty-five and older. There's a large percentage of people in this county that are my age in between sixty and sixty-five as well. If you get sick, you try to get in down here, can't get you in. We can get you in sometime next week. When someone is sick, next week ain't gonna cut it. You have a lot of people in this county like myself that suffer with high blood pressure, diabetes, whole nine yards. We have to go to Tappahannock, I very seldom go to, I'm gonna have to be dead to go down kill mine. So it's either Tappahannock or Richmond. And, uh, I don't know what we need to do to get somewhere else here, but that's something that needs to be looked into. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, would anyone else like to speak? Come on up, ma'am.
Good point.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Sally Conley from Rose Landing Road. I have a question. Uh, will we be getting decoration in the courthouse for Christmas?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's all.
Yes, ma'am.
And matter of fact, I forgot to mention something. We do have.
Hold on.
No, no, they asked, the citizens wanna know, we got a. No, no, they asked, the citizens wanna know, we got a Halloween boo-bash. We got trunk or treat here on October twenty-sixth from five to seven, so.
Let me make sure, you can't see.
So we gonna, we got another community event you can attend as well.
You said October what?
Twenty-sixth.
Yeah, okay. Would anyone else like to speak tonight? Anyone else like to make a public comment? All right, anyone else like to make a public comment? All right, would anyone in the virtual world tonight would like to make a public comment? All right, would anyone in the virtual world like to make a public comment? All right, I'll ask one more time. Anybody in the virtual world like to make a public comment? All right, I will close the public comment period. And next items are the public hearings, but we're gonna have a, we're gonna have a recess and be back at seven-ten.
You wanna make sure you announce both the two ones that have been tabled.
So Mr. Long, hurry up.
Mr. Chairman, just for anybody that may be in the audience, there were two public hearings tonight that were tabled to November ninth, twenty-twenty-three at seven PM. And that is dealing with the Slaughterhouse Conditional Use Public Hearing and the Solar Request. Those have been tabled till next month.
I figured some people were here for that.
Yeah, that's right.
I didn't want them to sit around.
And you shouldn't sit around.
Yeah.
Yeah. Right, ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna call this meeting back to order. And welcome everybody here tonight for our public hearings. Our first hearing on the agenda is requested by Kathy S. Bray. Philip, I'll let you take over.
Yes, sir. We have a request by Kathy S. Bray owner for a conditional use permit to construct a one-hundred-and-ninety-seven-foot communications tower on property zone A-one agricultural. The property is shown as tax map parcel eighteen-dash-one-dash-six and is located on Newman's Neck Road.
All right, Ms. Bray, do you have any comments you'd like to make or is someone representing you here tonight?
Suit.
Come on up, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, how you doing?
All right.
And members, members of the board, Sue Pfizer. I'm gonna try to do one thing tonight, keep a positive mental attitude. I don't know where I learned this from. Just took a reach out to Mr. Long. Jonathan Yates with Arcola Towers, also have Ryan Foltz with Arcola Towers. And Huey De Silva, who was the site acquisition agent and headed up the photo simulations that he's gonna show you in a moment. First and foremost, I have to do a reach out to Mr. Morrison. We do this work all over, very rarely do we encounter someone like Philip. He answered all my questions, he was incredible, the professionalism and just the general kindness. You, you have a great man there. Philip, thank you for all your help, thank you so very much.
Thank you, too.
I told him. I told him.
You taught him, you taught him in Northumberland? You taught him about PMA.
That's right.
You taught him about PMA and this stuff. What we're talking about tonight is a wireless facility. Kathy and David are here with us, this is on Ms. Kathy Bray's property on Newman's Neck Road. If you've ever been to Ms. Kathy's property, the first thing you're gonna think is you went to a zoo. She has alpacas, she has llamas, she has goats, she has peacocks, guinea heads and chickens. Other than that, I think they're pretty good neighbors, other than that, but interesting piece of property. They have about fourteen acres total. You have two acres where they live and two acres next to it where we're gonna put the facility. This was her, where she was born and raised. She got this property from a mother in two thousand. And then about twenty years ago, there was a ten-acre piece behind it that she acquired also in order to preserve some tree cover there. So all total, a total of fourteen acres. We're going on her other two-acre piece next, next to the house. And the purpose of the facility is for Verizon Wireless. Out there this afternoon, it was sort of good for me because being in the cell business, people, if you don't get back to them in two or three minutes, they're ready to wring your neck. I got to get away for a while because it, it, coverage was not what it should be. Verizon wants to fix it. What they're proposing is what we call the monopole-style facility. Towers come in about three different flavors. You have the old-style, the guy-wire towers, which are the very tall ones with the wires coming down. You have what we call the lattice or cell support, which are the three-sided steel. And the monopole, monopole is just a pylon. Obviously, the steel's a lot stronger, but it's just like a pylon you see in front of a Hardee's or Walmart. So we go one-hundred-and-ninety-seven feet in the air. The purpose of that is for Verizon to provide coverage. While we're talking about the footage of the tower, in discussions with Mr. Morrison and Eric, the county attorney, we are gonna offer to the county the spot between one-forty, one-hundred-and-forty feet and one-hundred-and-sixty feet will be reserved for county, Northumberland County use at no charge to the county. We understand about your safety system, we think that's essential. When we talk about Verizon coming in, and that's why I wanna hammer a little bit on safety, if I may. It is people talking on the phone, it is people Googling and looking up whatever. But also what's important, it helps provide access to nine-one-one first responders, and that's very important. You're trying to get fire, police, EMS. It's a lot easier when you can put the phone off your belt and it works and you get to the folks who need to hear from you. So all in all, I thank Philip, I gotta thank Ms. Kathy. Good location, very good location where Verizon wanted to be. Now, in addition to the county, the county will control between one-hundred-and-forty feet and one-hundred-and-sixty feet. We've also, the tower will be designed for three additional commercial carriers at least, when and if they wanna improve in that part of the world. As always, people ask me, what's, what's it gonna look like afterwards? I described the monopole. The good news, too, we're under two-hundred feet. And in the United States, if you're under two, two-hundred or under, you don't have to run the air navigation lighting. I think a lot of folks living around there will appreciate that we don't have to run the lighting. The closest landing strip to this is Webster Naval Outlying Field, and that's about eleven-point-six-eight nautical miles away. So from what we understand, we will not have to light it. If we get to do this tower, Ryan, as that's his job, it takes Ryan about sixty, no more than ninety days to put the tower in. So there'll be a little construction activity, a lot of that is putting in the foundation, letting that set, the tower itself gets stacked in a day. After that, on average Verizon, because these things are run so remotely now, Verizon will only have to come out maybe once a month just to take it with equipment. So we're not gonna create any additional traffic on Newman's Neck Road or Fountain Gate or Avalon. And going forward, the facility does not produce any noise, odor, lights, vibration, fumes of glare. What it does is just provides coverage to that area for the commercial carriers and whatever the county wants to do with their safety system. You know, the old adage, a picture tells a thousand words. We had Huey, who actually selected this site and worked with the Brais. Huey came in with a team this summer where they floated a balloon to see, you know, put it to the height of the tower, took some photos, and then his, their team superimposed them on it. One thing we have to be clear, tower has to be above the trees, it's got to talk to the other towers, it's a line-of-sight technology. But I think what Ms. Bray's property allowed us to do is we can't be invisible. There's no such thing as a stealth tower, we can't be invisible, it's got to communicate to the other. But I think her positioning there, I think you will see, I'm gonna pass out to you, I'm gonna turn it over to Huey. I'll pass out to you, there are a couple of vantage points where you can see it, a lot of places you can't. And that's what we were trying to do. We wanna bring this into the area. Wireless is now referred to as the fourth utility. It's referred to as the fourth utility for a lot of folks. It's just as important as power, telco, water and sewer. My son, to him, wireless is the most important, most important. Stupidest thing I did years back, I gave him that phone, it's like an appendage of his hand. His hand never has the phone not in it. So our desire here, and desire on behalf of Verizon Wireless, is to bring this infrastructure, bring this important infrastructure and do it in the best way possible. And that's why we went with the monopole design, the selection of the Bray property. But I'm gonna turn it over to Huey, he'll tell you what they did this summer, when he came out there and what happened.
Uh, good evening, everyone. So like Mr. Yates was saying, we went there one early morning, flew the balloon at the height of the tower that we're gonna propose. Like you can see on the first page, there's the locations where we took the pictures from. We just went around, selected, looked at different locations, see where we could see it, took some other pictures from different locations just to demonstrate the visual impacts of the tower. Like you can see, most of the locations, we will not be able to see the, the tower either because of the tree coverage or the terrain. I can see the first picture we took. The view was blocked by the trees, cannot see it. Then second location, the same, same thing, cannot see it from that location. Two was down here, blocked by the trees too, maybe the terrain. Third location, you can see the tower, this is as you come in on the main road. Of course, it's just a crop field across there, getting pretty close to the tower. So you would see this location, and you can see on this picture where we marked the balloon. And then on the following picture, where you can see the photo simulation of the tower itself. And that is visible on that area. For the fourth picture, also not, not visible from this location. And from the, the fifth location, you can see it, and like, in this, in this situation here, you can see, you can only see the very top of the tower behind the trees. And there shows you the simulation of the tower, just the very top of the tower. And of course, like Mr. Yates was mentioning, if it's completely blocked by the trees, then you lose the coverage. You cannot get ideal coverage. And finally, on the sixth location, you can see the very top of the tower as well. And you can see like right there behind the trees, and it's pretty fainted because it's a little further away from, from the tower location, but still also visible. Yep, and there, there, uh, most locations you cannot see it, can see it right here. But if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Thank you. And again, if, if the tower was up tonight and I drove back with Kathy and David, you couldn't see it because it doesn't have lights on it. So this is again, with its height, the monopole design. I guess what we're trying to say, we try to do our best job possible to bring the infrastructure, work with the county on their public safety systems, but try to do it in the most knockiest way. Not doing a big guy tower, not doing the three-sided lattice tower with all that steel, and trying to get it, get it to a height where we don't have to add the air nav lights. So we're here for any and all questions. And again, thanks to the incredible staff, thanks to the county attorney, thank y'all very much.
All right. Any board members have any questions before, before I open the public hearing? All right, go ahead.
What is the weight capacity of the tower?
Hi, everyone, Ryan from Arcola Towers. It's the weight capacity it can handle, because it's a lot of weight, so the big thing is wind loading, right? So wind drag, so it can ha, it will handle four other carriers and your guys' equipment. Their structure may need to handle all that, so.
It can handle antennas and microwave dishes.
Yeah.
So with the weight capacity based on the wind load and all of that, this is county has space from one-hundred-and-forty to one-hundred-and-sixty feet. So that's free space?
Yes.
For a piece?
Yep.
Okay. Suppose someone loads that tower to its capacity, what happens to the space for the county one-hundred-and-forty?
So then we'll, we'll make sure it's modified to structurally handle you guys. You guys will say, hey, Ryan, here's our, what we're putting on there, we'll run a structural analysis, make sure it does work. We'll do that double check, and after the structural modifications, we'll work with that and handle it for you guys.
That, that will be on the tower?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay, um, inside the fence.
Yep.
Gravel?
Yes, it's gravel, yeah, yeah. And we'll, we'll bring power, we'll bring power there, we'll run power there with the H-frame meter, so you guys have to just have a meter.
Inside the fence, the vegetation.
It's, it's.
Having to maintain this, I've seen, I've been through this thing, weed grow, the grass grows, and it seems that no one wants to take responsibility of keeping inside of the fence. Whether the wave need looking clean.
Yeah, so, so.
Go far out.
Yeah, so we do quarterly maintenance on all of our towers, we send someone out there, whether it be weed remediation, or weed whacking, or mowing, or whatever, we go out there quarterly, you know, about three-ish, fours times a year.
All right, any other board members have any questions?
You mentioned the wind load, and I know that it can be dynamic depending on what's actually on the tower.
Yes, sir.
So I'm just gonna say, worst case, what, what's the, what's the maximum wind under a full load on the tower that it can handle?
I believe this is rated for one-hundred-and-twelve, it's all based on where the location's at, or, you know, engineers look at it, I'm not an engineer, but I believe it's one-hundred-and-twelve, one-hundred-and-twelve miles per hour.
It's rated to the ANSI TIA two-twenty-two H standard, it's set for that part of Northumberland County. The engineer has to design to that and to design with the loading.
So basically, handle a Cat Four hurricane, life is good.
No, we don't wanna say Cat Four hurricane.
No, that's a Cat Four.
Another thing about the loading, what we hope to do is work closely with the county, determine quickly their loading, so as the tower's designed, that'll all be encompassed in, so.
It is a monopole, so it's a solid.
Yeah.
It's not a solid pole, but they round pole, how it's in the.
But working with your, your vendor, you know, for the public safety equipment, soon as we can get the loading, we calculate that into the tower.
All right, any more questions?
Good.
Long? Tom?
Nope.
All right. No more questions right now, gentlemen? We will, um, open the public hearing. I have no one on the sign-up sheet tonight that wanted to speak, would anyone like to speak on this issue? Come on up, ma'am.
Good evening. I have really no idea what to say. I was, I, I am in the neck, known as the crazy animal woman. And for a while, I thought my neighbors were not particularly happy with all my animals. But they got used to the peacock shrieking, and now I have two big white dogs barking. They'll protect the tower. I've lived here all of my life. I went away to go to college, and then I started working in Charlottesville where I went to school. And finally, I came back here to take care of my parents, and I've been here ever since. I tell the neighbors, you ought to be just thankful I don't have pigs. Because they're very stinky, and I will never have pigs. We were approached about the possibility of putting this tower on, on the property, and in the beginning, I was not too sure. Because when I was growing up there, two or three cars would come into the neighborhood and you knew exactly who they were. Now, we have all these developments, they're everywhere. And the cars just zoom, 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 and quite frankly, I worry about some of my animals because they walk down the middle of the road. I mean, you can't tell a peacock to stay out of the road. It's gonna do what it wants to do. But I think most of my neighbors have gotten used to them and are pretty happy with them and enjoy interacting with them. My major concern was, I was worried about the eagles. We do have quite a few eagles. And I was told, and I hope this is true, that in eagles nesting season, they can't touch the tower. They can't hurt them, if they decide that they're gonna build on it, then, then they're gonna build on it. Fine with me. My thing is, I, we've got all these people now that we never had before, I'm one of the originals. But they're there now, and they want better. they want better service. They can't use their phones. You know, they're there. We need to help them. I don't have a problem with it whatsoever. It's on my land. It's not offending me. I just wanted to say something, but that's it.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Bray. All right. Anyone else like to speak? Come on up, sir.
Good evening. Mandell Jackson, 1577 Funt Hill Road in Heathfield. I'm your neighbor. When I was coming along, we used to call it Bray Town. I don't know what they call it now. But I was raised, I'm just a mom from you on Funt Hill Road. I came to your farm and saw your, your animals, and you've got a green egg from y'all. My granddaughter loved it. I loved it too, until I ate it. All I have one question for you. My wife and I, we retired and moved back home, raised y'all, moved back home. You know, internet sucks down here, and phone service. So, if this will enhance my Verizon phone service? Thank God. Thank God. That's all I wanna say. I'd go back and tell my wife now that we're gonna get good, but we're not doing nothing with the internet, right? You don't, you have nothing to do with the internet. This phone service, right? Okay, well, one or two ain't too bad. That's all I wanna know. I'm pushing for that. Yeah, I go down there with my baseball, I had no cellphone service. I still got landline. Yeah, I'm old-fashioned. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Would anyone else like to speak? Come on up, Sheriff Beecham.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, board members. I guess for the record, Johnny Beecham, Sheriff, not obvious. I think this is great. We're gonna have space on the tower if we need it. But I wanna make sure there's language that we have ground space in the fence.
What you got?
Ground space.
Yes.
So, our shelters that are going in are 12 by 16. We need walk-around room, room for HVAC, room for standby generator, and then the propane tank should be on the outside of the fence, so the company can get to it. Just some things throwing out that we're gonna need if we go on the tower, so you're not in the blind. I just wanna make sure everybody knows that. Tower space is important, the ground space is, we need all that. So, whatever size we need to accommodate all that.
Can we make sure that's in writing?
And that, just for clarification, that's not anything we can put in as a condition? That's a pro for the, the tower company?
I understand it can't be a condition, but it can be part of something in writing.
Right.
From the landowner or the tower company, but we need to ensure that, because base up in the sky don't mean nothing if you don't have the ground space to put you in.
We agree. The sheriff, if he gets to hang antennas but doesn't have his base equipment, we're done. So, we will take care of the sheriff's needs.
Thank you very much.
All right. Anyone else like to speak?
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? All right. Would anyone in the virtual world like to speak tonight? Any of them? All right. Would anyone else in the virtual world like to speak on the cellphone tower? No one? All right, since we have no one else wants to speak, I'm gonna close the public hearing, and the matter is before the board.
I've looked at the engineering drawings, and they seem better than just solid. I move that we approve this.
Second.
All right.
Magic language.
All right. That's your motion.
You've got to add the language.
Yeah, we need to add the language to it.
Yeah, the language that says this is in your just interest and all that.
I don't have it in front of me.
I'll get it.
Yes.
He made the motion. Pass that down to him.
Oh, you're gonna make me read in public now, are you?
Yeah, since you made the motion.
This motion is made in due consideration of the public health and safety, and the general welfare of the community, public necessity, convenience, and in the exercise of good zoning practices, and pursuant to the body's statutory authority. I've moved that we approve this request.
Yes.
And with the-
Go ahead.
I'm gonna hold on to this.
Duncan McCaffrey.
I didn't hear you.
Second. I didn't know if you all wanted to add the conditions.
Yeah, we haven't heard the conditions yet. I wanted to add, add the conditions into it. Mr. Morrison?
Yes, sir. Suggested conditions if approved are the construction of the tower shall be completed within 12 months of the date of the building permit. All sides of the tower shall be fenced, along with bog wire, and evergreen vegetative screening shall be planted to screen Newman's Neck Road as shown on the site plan, and the towers to be constructed as depicted on the site drawing.
I move to amend the motion to include the conditions.
All right. How about the second?
I'll second.
All right, second, okay. All right. We got a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I have some discussion. This county has never been opposed to cellphone towers. I can tell you that. Passports, even on county land, has offered it to be cited and waived five years of the payment. As Mandell mentioned, it's very important. And you mentioned about EMS, fire, and rescue and police. I'm on rescue squad. My mother's house, she could not get a cellphone reception inside her house. She had to go probably 75 feet outside. If she got an emergency, she's not getting anywhere. Sometimes, I've been down in Reedville, I needed to call the hospital, get approval, do this, that, and the other. If you want to get cellphone reception, you gotta go to the end of this walkway and walk down here. So, we're not opposed to it. I can tell you that right now. The more requests you want to bring, until December the 31st, I'm approving them. Because, we don't say 5G, we say OG. Oh, my God, we don't have it. Mate, that's just, just as serious. I mean, technology has not made it down here, in many ways. And we, you know how many towers the various providers have. And it's very important for safety, possibly not development, et cetera. We're sometimes at the end of the world, and we get left out. So, I'm fully in support of this, and if you want to bring more, bring on.
That's correct.
Or a weapon. Yeah. Well, I know.
Yeah, that's correct. Since Verizon's changed from 4G to 5G, the service has gone down the hill. I don't have the coverage at my host, and I can all, well, if I look up just a little bit, I can see the tower. My service has gone right down to nothing. All right, we have a motion on the floor. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, motion passes. One question, gentlemen. One question. When is your start date? Somewhere within 30 days of it. Any idea? I know it depends upon steel and all that.
We should, we should have steel hardened.
That'll be fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our next item. Thank y'all.
Yeah, we do need it.
All right, our next item on the list is a consideration to amendment, amendment to the county code. Luttrell, I'll let you take care of that.
Yes, sir. The next public hearing is amendment to increase the building and land use permit fees.
Ladies, gentlemen, we're trying to have a meeting, please.
Next public hearing is amendment to increase the building and land use permit fees, which also includes a new fee under section 68-1, schedule of permit and other fees. The proposed increased fees will help defray the required advertising and staff costs associated with managing permits. Most of these permits have not been increased or modified since 2001.
All right, you have to see the fees. Robert, you got, you got the fees up there now. All right. Any comments from the board before we open the public hearing?
I guess we state that, pretty much from feedback we got from citizens in the budget process, we asked the board to, kind of, best we can to generate funds elsewhere than to increase taxes. So, this is what we're trying to do.
Yeah. Most of these fees do not even cover the advertising cost.
And that's true.
So, we, that's why we're trying to increase it.
It's just like EMS reimbursement. You're just getting a fraction back of what the actual cost.
Yeah.
Because if you're not even getting the, in the advertising, you're not touching salaries.
No, that's right. Not touching salaries yet.
And nobody could afford that. That's, that's obvious.
I was looking at what other counties charge, and, because I was worried, did we go over? No, we're still considerably under in every single one of those line items.
We're still under.
Is that good or bad? I don't know, but right now.
Hey, small step, move forward.
Baby steps. Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I don't have any opposition.
We have to come in in January, right? As far as the cigarette types, right?
That's, yes, that, that's, that will start in January.
Yeah. That's something else what we're doing right now. All right. Any other comments for open the public hearing? All right. If I don't have any comments, I'll open the public hearing on this. I have no one on the sign-up sheet that signed up to speak. Would anyone like to speak tonight on raising the permit fees? Anyone like to speak tonight? And I hope everyone can see the, can see the fee schedule up on the screen now. We have Northumberland County, and we have Lancaster, Richmond, Westmoreland, Essex, Middlesex, and Matthews there. So, we have some comparison. All right. Would anyone like to speak?
You know, it's pretty hard for those people to see that. We should have had something ran out, passed out, you know? Because I bet you, maybe one or two can see that. You know, and understand. I mean, if we really wanted some input.
Yeah. I see a lot of squinting in the eyes there.
Yeah. I mean, it's just, just about impossible for, I tell you, people to see it. Some of these guys right up there, I can't even, I can't, but uh-
All right. Anyone like to speak? All right. Would anyone in the virtual world like to speak on the increase in the permit fees? Anyone in the virtual world would like to speak on increasing the permit fees? No one? All right. Since we have no one that wants to speak, I will close the public hearing, and the matter is before the board.
Mr. Tadlock, when would the effective date of this, assuming it passed tonight?
I was gonna ask the board to set an effective date, either November, December, or if you'd rather, the first of the year. We do, we do have to-
I'm thinking what they've got in the office. People, you discussing one thing, I don't want to blindside people.
We do need some time in order to update the computer programming for Dave's software. So, we do need some time to do that.
Would January 1?
That would give us plenty of time.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve this change in schedule of the fees, effective January the 1st.
2024. I'll second that. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes, Mr. Tadlock, for January the 1st.
Thank you.
2024.
2024. You're right, Tommy.
I'm not going backwards in time.
No, we don't need to go backwards in time. All right. We don't have any other public hearings. The only thing we have left on our agenda tonight is a closed meeting. So, whenever you are ready, Mr. Tadlock.
All right. I need the board to make a motion that the Northumberland County Board of Supervisors convene in closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Freedom of Information Act, section 2.23711A1, for the discussion and consideration of personnel matters. Invited to attend the closed meeting is necessary the county administrator and assistant county administrator and county attorney, as they are deemed necessary, and their presence will reasonably aid the board in its consideration of the topics to be discussed pursuant to Virginia Forest Section 2.23712F.
All right. Can I have a motion?
So moved to go into closed meeting pursuant to the reasons stated by Mr. Tadlock.
All right, I have a second.
Second.
All right, got a motion, second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ladies, gentlemen, we will be going into our closed meeting.
Yep. All right, need a motion that the Northumberland Board of Supervisors return to-
Mike phone.
Need a motion that the Northumberland Board of Supervisors return to public meeting and certified by roll call vote, and only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting, were heard, discussed, or considered during the closed meeting.
I move what Mr. Tadlock said.
I got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I got two seconds. All right. Now, roll call vote. Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Long?
Aye.
Mr. Brand?
Aye.
Mr. Tomlin?
Aye.
Mr. Haney votes aye. We are back in the open meeting right now. Mr. Tadlock, you need some action taken.
Yeah. You want to hire some people?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we hire Carl Hayden for the IT position, which was advertised at the salary of $45,000.
Second.
All right, I got a motion and a second. Do I have any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against? All right.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we hire Michael Plant, with an E, for building official at the salary of $67,100.
Second.
You got it.
Who's got it? You got it, Jim? All right. Whoever. All right, I got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against? All right, next.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve Brent Pamiato, to increase his salary from his current to $39,214.32, since he passed his Class IV sanitary license.
All right, I got a motion, second from y'all gentlemen. Which one wants to do it?
You have to use it.
All right. We got a second over. All right, we got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against? All right, Tommy?
All we got, I think. Do we have a figure for it yet?
You have a figure for us? Company and figure?
Well, right now, it's One Step is the, the company.
One Step is the lowest at what price? All right. My motion is to-
And that's for 14 vehicles.
My motion is to contract with One Step for, what was that figure again? And that's for 14 vehicles. All right. My motion is to contract One Step for $2,000- My motion is to contract One Step for two thousand, three hundred, forty-three dollars and sixty cents for fourteen vehicles.
I'll second that.
All right, I got a motion and a second. Do I have any other discussion?
And do you need any kind of motion that it would possibly come out of ARPA funds?
If you could just include that in the.
I'll amend the motion to include ARPA funds.
Mend the motion to come out of ARPA funds.
And I'll amend, I'll set that as a second.
All right. Is that all right for everybody?
You ready for discussion?
Ready for discussion.
My only thing is, you know, suppose the sheriff was looking at GPS, or EMS would be looking at GPS. What are we going to do? You don't have it now, John? Do you need it? Put GPS in the vehicles, so you can find where they went and where.
Yeah, we have the capability.
Okay.
Robert's working on that.
That's done through CAD. Well, could EMS also be picked up on it? Proper equipment's installed in the EMS unit and be tracked through the CAD system if that's something that needed to take place? All right, so they're covered.
They'll be covered.
Yep.
What was that, Rob?
That's actually the EMS top book, but yeah.
Okay.
It does, it built in the laptop.
All right, well, that's good. As long as, all right, they'll be covered.
From an enforcement side, from EMS side, they would be able to see it. From an enforcement side, personnel side of it, I wouldn't see that. Just, just for your information.
But if we had a concern with, for example, EMS unit not being where it needed to be, that's something you could go back to the sheriff's office and.
Right, right.
And get that information.
I don't think they have.
It doesn't, we're told. Okay. Okay. That's a little bit different than what you're talking about. Yeah. That's it. We're good.
All right, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against? All right, Mr. Tadlock, how, how soon is this process? Thirty, sixty days?
Yeah, I think it's pretty much you order the equipment and you plug it in.
That's fine. I, I just wondered on ball, ball timeframe.
This is the cheaper side of things. They do have one that's hardwired into the system. But we didn't feel like we needed to go there yet.
We'll see how this does.
Yeah, if this is unplugged, it notifies you that it's been unplugged.
Okay. All right. Gentlemen, we have any other business?
Yeah, I got some business. I move that we hire Mr. Johnson.
On these plates.
So he's not just a paper board member.
I don't mind being a paper pusher.
I know, I think it's appropriate for you to be having the same plate.
Take care of that, Mr., take care of that, Luttrell.
Yes, sir. We'll get that straight.
I understand it was short this time, but you're entitled to be equal, and you are equal.
I think he's done a good job.
Yes.
I do.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, we'll get that, we'll get that straight in a second.
So if there's nothing else.
Can, can we confirm the date for the joint meeting? With everybody, while we have everybody here.
Date for the joint meeting? Hold on, let me see if I got, I should have it here, Luttrell.
It was November thirty.
It's, it's interesting, because I was looking at dates, and the fourteenth and fifteenth actually popped out like, on the bright light, but that was just.
We got emergency, emergency management on the twenty ninth.
And you had, you sent out.
The next meeting would be the thirtieth of November, November thirtieth at five thirty as a joint meeting with the board and the school board.
That works for me.
All right.
That's the time we have before.
Yes, sir. Yeah, five thirty.
Five thirty, Jim, yeah, that's what we usually have it for.
And what was the gentleman's name when we got hired to do building?
Mike Building, Mike Plant.
Michael Plant with an E.
You should know Mike.
I probably know him when I seen him.
Yeah, probably know him when you seen him. Anything else you need, Luttrell confirmed?
If that date and time works for the, you all, I will get back with the school division.
Yeah, it works, I think it works for everybody here.
All right.
And I don't want to speak for everybody.
I said email was good by me.
And we have, we have a trunk or treat at five PM.
Seven.
Five to seven.
Number twenty-six.
That's on the twenty-sixth of October. Expect to see all the board members up there dressed up for Halloween.
You, you're costume all year long.
I'm always ready.
I got suspenders.
You too, you too, Sheriff Bishop. Yeah, but you got to put something else on this time.
You're going to wear your suspenders at same booth.
All right, anything else we need? Do we need to carry over for anything?
I move that we adjourn.
All right, I got a motion to adjourn, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, all right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank y'all, ladies and gentlemen, for coming. And we'll look forward to seeing you at our next meeting.